Roll call, Rick Cerandria here. Phil Rogers, Ned Dalton, Vincent Giannetto.
Here.
Roger Mitchell.
Here.
Gary Swingle.
Here.
Jeff Franson.
Here.
And we have one vacant, Marie Genovese was here but she resigned. Okay. I'm gonna read the ground rules for tonight's public hearing. The applicant or their representative will make their formal presentation to the board stating their specific hardship and precisely why this merits a variance from the zoning regulations of Towne Water Town. All comments, discussions, and observations shall be made through the chair after proper recognition by the chairman. This is necessary to ensure that only one person at a time speaks on any issue, thus making it easier for everyone to understand and for clear legal transcription. All persons addressing the board shall begin by first clearly stating their name and address for the record. If necessary, the person may be asked to spell his or her name for the record. Following the presentation of the application, the zoning board of appeals will ask specific questions of the applicant. After the board has asked its questions of the applicant, I shall then allow any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this application or against it to address the board. I shall then allow the applicant to respond to their comments of the members of the general public. I shall then allow any members of the general public who wish to present any additional information or clarifying discussion to do so. I shall then provide an opportunity for the applicant to respond to these additional remarks if they or the representative so wishes. The zoning board of appeals has 35 days from the date the public hearing commences to complete the public hearing. The board may ask the applicant for a 35-day extension of the public hearing period if the board requires any additional information or wishes to schedule a site walk to observe the situation for themselves. The zoning board of appeals has 65 days from the date when the public hearing is closed to render its decision. The board may or may not make its decision tonight at its regular meeting following the public hearing. You may stay for the regular meeting if you wish, or you may leave at the end of the public hearing and contact the zoning office the following morning to determine the status of your application. I am gonna sit Jeff Franson for Ned Dalton. I'm gonna fit, sit Gary Swingle for Phil Rogers. Continuation of a public hearing from the February 23rd, 2022 for application number 2022-1 of the TAF school for 40-foot height variance for installation of four light poles, 70 feet high for an existing athletic field at 110 Woodbury Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R20 residential zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, it is a revised legal notice. Please read that into the record. It's attached to the agenda.
Who's sitting in for Ned Dalton?
I, I'll read. Zoning Board of Appeals, Towne Watertown, will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022, at the Watertown Town Hall Council Chambers, 61 Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, to hear and act upon the following application. Application 2022-1 of the TAF school for a 40-foot height variance for installation of four light poles to be 70 feet high for an existing athletic field at 110 Woodbury Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R20 residential zoning district. Section 33.3.13 of the Watertown zoning regulation states that the height of luminaries except streetlights in the public right-of-way shall not exceed the height of 30 feet. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. Copy of the applications is on file in the Planning and Zoning Office, Watertown Municipal Center, 61 Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. This is dated in Watertown on the 10th day of March 2022, as well as the 17th day of March 2022. Edwin Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is the applicant here? State your name and address for the record.
Jay Godden. Uh, Jay Godden, 101 Hamilton Avenue, Watertown, Connecticut.
And I have with me Mike Mahoney from Musco. So, we will first, you know, I can speak very briefly as to why the need for the variance, and then my, Michael will speak to actually the technology and how it works to meet the expectations of the code.
Sir, sir, could you just sit back a little bit?
Sure.
Turn up the speaker?
Yeah, sorry about that. And then, and then we have a presentation we can go through that I think would answer other questions. So, the 30-foot poles as provided for in the town code present hardship in the sense that they actually result in excessive light spill, glare, and skyglow that is disrupt, that's actually disruptive beyond the campus borders, and goes against actually what the code requires for specifically in the language that it offers. And beyond that, it offers an unsafe playing experience. And so, with 30-foot poles would come a requirement for a lot more poles and more light fixtures, which will not deliver an acceptable experience from a, from a safety, light efficiency, and light pollution, or an aesthetic perspective, from our point of view. So, that is really, that's why we're here around seeking the variance of 40 feet versus the 30 feet in the code. We can speak more broadly, you know, to, to why the need for lights and other things if the, if you guys care to go there, because I know that that sometimes gets intertwined or interwoven into the conversation. But before we do, before we go to the presentation, I'd like Mike to give a demonstration.
So, once again, for the record, Michael Mahoney, I live in Falls Village, Connecticut, but for the record, here representing Musco Lighting, employed by Musco Lighting as well. And if we could get the lights dimmed, just a minute or two, what I want to show you is really just how technology has changed. Sports lighting is not, has not been immune to advancements in manufacturing technology, and our ability to control light has really been moved forward incredibly with the advent of LED as a light source. So, what I've got here is a...
You got me here? Yep. This is a scale model of a 70-foot structure with one individual luminaire at the top, and this is, this depicts a window of a house 150 feet away from the edge of the field. The fixture itself is aimed at 30 degrees, which is similar to what the aiming angle is that is designed at TAF. And really, at the core of this whole exercise is just geometry. We determine, we, first of all, we'd love to sell 35-foot tall poles. I'd go to far fewer zoning meetings. Project would be less expensive, it'd be much easier for me to delight fields. Unfortunately, it's just a horrendous approach to sports lighting because the glare that a 35-foot pole, the luminaires, because of the lack of an aiming angle, you'd actually be just pushing light across the horizon as opposed to focusing it down. So, in order for us, the first thing we do is we determine where the pole is going to be located. We want to be as close to the field as possible, safe distance away, so a player doesn't just run into it if they're just off the edge of the field, out of those line of sight for any spectators. And then, the distance from that pole location to approximately the center of the field, when you have a four-pole system, each pole is responsible for lighting one quadrant of the field. So, that distance from the pole location to basically the center of the field, and then give or take some, you know, that, the angle, you have to get to the gold mouth area and out to the, the center area of the field, but that's the hard distance, so that's set. We can't do anything to manipulate that. So, once that's set, then we know we want at least a 25-degree aiming angle at the top of the pole. So, you get a squared plus b squared equals c squared. We've got b squared here, a squared here, c squared here. We know to get 25 degrees, we apply a cotangent of 2.145, and that tells us we need a 70-foot tall pole in this instance. Quite often, if you have a track around a field, this distance from the center of the field to the pole location gets further. We go to 80-foot poles, bigger stadiums, 90-foot poles. The further away from the field, taller the poles get. So, there's a lot of technology out there with LED. You can Google, and you can get shipped right to your house, LED floodlights from anywhere. This is the type of glare control you're gonna experience with just a typical LED floodlight. And that's, that's where the, the word comes from. It's literally flooding light everywhere. And you can even experience, I'm sure the gentleman down at the end is experiencing, it's a, it's a lot of glare. LED is a very intense light source, far more intense than metal halide, high-pressure sodium, even incandescent. So, you'll see, it's just literally flooding light everywhere. And available in the marketplace, you can even get, again, these are to scale, you can get little visors that manufacturers will put on them, really does virtually nothing to mitigate the glare. However, what we've done is the following. Notice how we've eliminated the view of that light source. So, everything we can possibly do to eliminate glare, and you can see, this light is being cut off right here, the edge of the field. So, that's with, again, with a proper aiming angle, 70-foot tall pole, that light's being directed onto the playing surface. You cannot see the light source, which is the glare source, from, you know, just 100 feet away. If this were to be lowered, this visor basically becomes insignificant, because what, you're lowering the pole, but we still have to aim it out to the center of the field. So, as we lower this pole, that angle of the fixture becomes much flatter. So, this, you're getting more like this, you can see even out there. Yeah. So, as we lower that pole, we're just exposing that light source, that glare source, and really, first of all, it's wasting energy, because all the light that you're generating is going into the neighbors as opposed to being down on the playing surface. And it's really unplayable, because more, or less and less often, when we're listening to or watching a broadcast of a ballgame, I, I rarely hear, "I lost it in the lights." And that used to be a regular occurrence years ago. People would, players would often say, "I lost it in the lights," or you'd see them, you know, looking for the object in the lights. You don't really see that or hear that terminology any longer because of the ability to control light, to use proper aiming angles, proper mounting heights. This is also, you'll notice, there's zero light going above the source itself. So, this is an International Dark Sky Association-approved methodology of lighting. For, for an aerial sport, we don't do it with soccer because it's a whiter object, white or dayglow even, the ball itself. But with football or baseball, what we have, because the light is so dramatically cut off up here, we actually have lower wattage fixtures at the base of the pole that are lighting just a very small, calculated, measured amount of light that's framing any object that goes above the lights. So, a punt or a high-fly ball, players actually have light on the bottom of the object as it's coming down, so the playability is far more enhanced. You, and instead of having the skyglow that you typically see from every fixture, with this approach, again, it's not specific to this project, but because of the technology, it just shows how dramatic the cutoff is, because we need to add lights for aerial sports, because there is no light above these fixtures. So, International Dark Sky Association-approved methodology, approved as far as backlight, uplight, and glare, so bug rating. And that's really the, the biggest thing that I wanted to get across was just how different sports lighting is these days with LED. Thank you.
But the, the neighbors were able to see the lights?
Did you get a chance to see this?
You were able to see the difference?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yep, ma'am, what?
Because if you want to come closer, they can turn it on and see how it works.
Did you see it? Yes.
Can you see it from?
Yeah, please come to this side, yes, and if you remove the, the top first and then...
So, this is what, what you could potentially see if TAF hadn't been working with Musco. This is the type of technology which is available in the marketplace, and, you know, you'll see it on sides of buildings, you know, like church steeples, just because LED is such a bright, tense light source, if it's not applied correctly, it's really irritating, it's gonna be debilitating. Headlights on cars nowadays are just brutal, somebody high beams nowadays, you really feel it. Close to the factory. To that.
It's great to be lights on the bottom as well.
No, you won't have these. In this application, because it's soccer, you don't have lights on the bottom. If it was football, we could have a darker object, against a dark night sky. We have the, the ball tracker fixtures. For baseball, she doesn't, much more aerial sport. So, you then would just have this type of light control at the top of the pole, and this is simulating 150 feet from the edge of the field.
Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
So, we could put the presentation up, I guess, and flip through that. I believe most of us were able to be part of the site visit, but, so there's just a few quick reminder pages, but this is obviously an aerial view. It highlights a couple of things. Number one is the location of this field is very centered in our campus, and therefore, you know, there's, there's a good amount of space between that and the property lines. The other element that's a little bit relevant for us in terms of, from a program standpoint is there's four fields that are actually properly constructed athletic fields now that this field has been remodeled and turf's been installed and proper drainage. But there's the, in the upper left-hand corner, the football track, the football and track location, that field is a well-drained grass field. We have another turf field that's been around for, for more than a decade, I think about 15 years. And then, the other one down closer to the cemetery line is labeled just grass field. So, so those are the four fields that we can use in inclement weather, which is a little bit relevant to why we need a turf, another turf field, but also the lights themselves, which I'll get into in a little bit. If we turn the page, this just highlights how we think ultimately we're gonna be enhancing this part of campus for, from our own perspective, with extensive landscaping and new network of paths, which, you know, obviously our community benefits first and foremost from, and, and our campus is pretty open to our neighbors as well, and to anybody for that matter for walking through or what have you. So, if we keep going, changing the page, again, this, this, this isn't speaking to the hardship around why we need the variance, but it speaks a little bit to what we believe is, is sort of a hardship for the school and in our ability to deliver, deliver program for our 600 students. You know, we're responsible for their overall well-being, well-being, not just their athletic development, and this includes daily wellness and fitness. We have a lot of teams that we, that we process through our facilities, and as I mentioned, you know, there's only four fields that, that could be in play this time of year. And, and one of them is this new turf field, and, and with that, you know, we, without lights, we run into trouble with, with daylight in the late, late fall, early winter, late winter, early spring, when we need to use those fields. So, the idea of being able to extend the day a little bit, just into the early evening, and get the kids out there, and getting their healthy exercise is important to us. If we turn the page, you know, and we'll have another slide that speaks to it, but, but we're really an outlier amongst high schools in the area, and increasingly just everywhere, in the sense that we don't actually have a, a field with athletic lights. And, and so, you know, whether it be Watertown High School right here, or any of the surrounding areas, they all have field lights, they're all, they're all 70 feet or higher. Our direct, our direct sort of lead competitors, those that we compete against to get kids to come here, as well as on the playing fields, schools like Cho, Loomis, Avon, Kent Salisbury, Hotchkiss, they all have fields with lights, and they're all 70-foot poles or taller. So, you know, again, building community and providing a healthy outdoor life and evening activity is, is really an important thing for us to be able to deliver to our population. If we turn the page here, you know, these, this is the zoning regulations right off the website, and the bold language really speaks to what Mike was just speaking to, as to why we need the height. Because without the height, we, we cannot actually meet, meet the regulations that's spelled out there in the bold language, whether that be avoiding unnecessary upward illumination, exterior, you know, not, not going across property lines. So, I just put that up there as a rough, as a reference point, just 'cause I doubt any of us spend a lot of time going through the details of the code. And then, if we, if we turn the page, you know, I, I spoke to this at the outset, and, and Mike did as well, so, I mean, this is, this is why the variance. So, just in, in, I can allow people a second to take a look at it. I won't repeat myself, because I was pretty much reading these bullet points to start the meeting. But the industry standard precedent is clear for athletic field lighting, you know, four, four poles at 70 foot or higher. And if you turn the page, you know, again, this is just citing the pole height of other Connecticut installations, including Watertown High School, 80 feet, done more than a decade The aesthetic, you know, I know it's really important for the community, it's really important for the neighbors, it's really important to us, we have to live with it every day. So, we care deeply about this element. It's really, as I tried to highlight on the, on the second slide of the presentation, a central component of this overall project. Unfortunately, you know, there's, there's always compromise involved, and, and, you know, introducing these poles is, is certainly an aesthetic change, and we'll take a look at some pictures in a second. But, you know, we really, we value our place in the historic district. You know, we've, we've tried to play a central role in both how we maintain our own campus, how we've developed it over time to maintain the aesthetic consistency that ties to the history. We've obviously, over time, acquired buildings from the town in that, in that part of the area, or from other property owners, and, and try to do our best to certainly maintain their condition. And so, you know, this is why, part of, part of what drove this location as, as the place where we would first, you know, where we would actually want to put in the lights, to keep them in the interior of the campus. If we change the, you know, I know, I know other concerns that came up at the earlier meeting, traffic and noise. This won't change, certainly will not change traffic flow. It's high, you know, at our biggest high school sporting event in the given year, you know, we might get 150 people, 200 people in a hockey rink once a season, and we might get 200 people at a Parents' Day football game. And I would imagine, if we had a meaningful sporting event in the fall, in terms of a soccer playoff game or something of the sort, we would get a couple hundred people there. And if it went into the evening, they will be fans, they'll make some noise. I know that, as, you know, we actually, you know, we, we have adolescent kids who are living in a residential community, sometimes their music plays too loud. We do our best to very much do that. You know, we, if we're holding games that would have large crowds, you know, they, they would be scheduled to end no later than 9:00 PM, and if some, you know, in an unforeseen, unforeseen circumstance, a weather delay, a broken-down bus on the way to the game, right, maybe that drags to 9:30, 9:45, but this is not gonna be late-night, you know, double headers or anything of the sort. So, here, for those, you know, everybody who's on the site visit would, would recognize this view. This is standing up on the hill. It's a little hard to see from afar, but the, the white box on the right represents the, the actual, you know, a superimposed light. The, the arrow to the left shows it in comparison, thanks, Mike, to the, to the flagpole that's existing right now. And obviously, this is a view that we, the school, live with first and foremost. So, if you turn the page, again, this is, this is where we were all standing on that day, for those of us who were there, when, next to one of the light, light pole foundations, looking back at where the two light poles would be. And again, it's our view, the pole on the far side, sort of in the middle of the triangle of poles there, is, is actually the one that's most exposed to the outside of the campus, and in particular to, to North Street neighbors. So, if we turn the page, this is the view that, that the outside community has from the corner of North Street and, and Route 6. There's no lights in this image, but if we turn the page, there's actually three of the four light poles are superimposed in that red box. Obviously, the gray trees and the gray day and, but are doing us a favor, but you'll see that none of those, none of those three poles actually rise above the horizon or, or above the trees in the background as superimposed.
Also, if I could just jump in on that one. The poles themselves are hot-dip galvanized steel, so, which of course, weather over time, there's no shine to them. The fixtures themselves are a powder-coated gray, die-cast aluminum. So, it's, as opposed to the legacy lighting, which is a big, round, shiny aluminum spheres that sun bounces off of, and you can, it's pretty obnoxious. These are much lower profile, and really made to blend in with the, with the surroundings.
So, this really, this really turns to Mike's part of the portion, or part of the presentation, sorry, which, you know, but this is, this is just sort of some terminology and some stuff that we've already referred to around light spill versus glare versus skyglow. I think we've talked about this stuff in prior meetings or, or on the site visit. But, but obviously, as he outlined here, the design of these poles, both with their technology, but also with the height, is, is to really limit, limit all the impact of those three things, and, and we'll have some further images as we go through. So, if you go to the next page, and Mike, you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, so, here again, we're just recapping what I started out with, what's driving the pole height. That, again, that fixed distance from the pole location to the approximate center of the pit or the field, that's the set distance that we're left to, to deal with. If we, in this case, we're showing a 40-foot pole, and again, this doesn't show up on the, on the screen.
Yes.
But the 40-foot pole, again, and the 70-foot pole, the, the brightest part of the beam, so the aiming angle, is out to the center of the field where that football is. So, that doesn't change. At 40 feet, you can see the off-site impact on a, on a house off the field. With a 70-foot pole, you can see how the, the light's cut off at the, at the edge of the field, like we depicted here with the, with the model. Go to the next. This is taking us through the math. Again, it's, it's just geometry for us, or I guess trigonometry if you wanna get it specific, but it's a squared plus b squared equals c squared. Once that distance is set, we know what angle we need to get that light down onto the field and not impact anybody off-site, and that's how we arrive at 70 feet being the, the best case scenario for this application. We can go to the next. This is a depiction of 35-foot pole height, and we did the trigonometry, so instead of having about a 27, 28-degree aiming angle, we end up with, I believe, about 14... about fourteen-degree aiming angle, so much flatter, we're just broadcasting all that light, and that glare, more specifically, out into the neighborhood. Next one. And this is probably the, my favorite. It just takes you through the gradual progression from the far left, with the thirty-five-foot mounting height, and these, these colors are representing glare. So, the, up in the red, you're at a hundred and fifty thousand candela, and just to give you a, kind of a baseline, significant glare, twenty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand candela, that's, you know, piping headlights of a car, going to that range. And so, you can see the red, the thirty-five-foot mounting heights, that is a glare bomb, I mean, it's horrendous. We get into a sixty-foot mounting height, so we, we compress a lot of that light, a lot of that glare, but we're still well into the community, surrounding area. And then just another ten feet, to really capture, let this visor do his work, cut that light off, you can see how all that glare, all that light is contained within the, the community there, within the campus. Another impact of the thirty-five-foot mounting height is you build up, and these are, this is showing horizontal pole handles on the field. You build up so much light right underneath the pole, you've got over a hundred-foot handles underneath the pole, because you've got all that light, and it's, it's so close to the field, and we're just not able to distribute it across. So the, the bright, brightest point on the field compared to the darker point is well outside of a safe number, so light, or an object like a sidewalk will go from dark to light, dark to light, and really impact playability. And then with the seventy-foot pole.
Next.
Go to the next slide. We've got a really uniform distribution of light, so the maximum to minimum ratio is like one point five to one, so it's a, with that seventy-foot pole, we're able to evenly distribute the light across the surface, and, you know, just enhance the, the aesthetic, but more importantly, the, the safety, whether, especially if they're playing lacrosse on this field, you've got a much smaller object going at a really fast rate. So, that, that's another key component to the, the mounting height, being able to mitigate the brightness to the dark spot. Next one. Just some additional bullet points about, and then if we talk.
It's really a, really a recap, yeah. And I, I think that we've probably hit on just about all the key points. That, that image certainly shows that with the technology, how you can contain the light on the field, and that's obviously our objective. You know, again, that's a recap of a slide we've shared along the way, maybe it was with the, with the planning and zoning committee, but it shows the evolution of the technology.
So just for, for reference, the, the technology, you see back in nineteen seventy-seven, that's the, that's what's still in play at the, the high school here in town. That's a, that's spawn aluminum reflector, metal halide fixture, and then, you know, we, we've been focused on controlling light for the last forty-five years, and that's where we are today, with the LED system, where these are all the same height poles, they're all producing the same amount of light on the field, but we just eliminated the view of that light source.
If you, yeah, and this is an important slide, I think, just in the sense that Mike was speaking to the number of candles you need as you get lower, and obviously, we'll have a lot fewer of these candles with taller poles, from an aesthetic perspective. And this, and we can just go through, flip through these, I think, and I'd actually just say, at this point, we're, we're either open to questions, or allow others, allow others to speak their part.
Okay. You guys got any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
How many times a week would you be using, would you be playing games? I mean, the fields would be used, are you practicing every day with teams?
We, we practice, we practice generally on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and play contests on Wednesday and Saturday, interscholastically. So, so we would be using the field on Wednesdays and Saturdays for competition every week of the fall and spring, but in terms of using the lights for competition, I would not anticipate using them more than, you know, a couple, two to three times, I would say, in the fall, a couple of times in the spring. I, I would say that we would anticipate using them for some practices, as I alluded to, at certain times of year, that just extends the day, in such, in such a way that we can get everybody on the field, and outdoors, exercising, in inclement weather, we have to funnel people through fewer fields. But, but those, those activities on practices have to wind down by, you know, by, by seven, seven-thirty, so most of the year, we have daylight to work with. But the kids are, the kids are required to be in study hall by, by eight o'clock, seven forty-five, I think.
If daylight savings time gets passed.
Yeah.
You may not even use the lights that frequently.
We won't need them nearly as frequently, that's correct.
Right?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, did, did the high school ever, never came before us for variance, for the lights, right?
No.
No.
I think probably when the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the addition to the high school, that was like a part of the package.
So, so we're special, right?
Yes, they made a decision on that.
It appears to me that our, our, our regulations are antiquated for today's technology, really. Because no one who puts lights up right now would do what he says, you know?
Actually, there is a problem with our regulations, and that's actually created this hardship. Because if you are trying to meet section thirty-three point three thirteen, which limits the height to thirty feet, then you are in violation of section, the other section that said that the light cannot go outside of the field.
Right.
But if you want to try to meet that section, then you are in violation of section thirty-three point three thirteen.
So our.
I, I will bring this to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission, to look into the regulations, to maybe they can fix this.
Yeah.
For future applications.
From his presentation, it appears.
Because they cannot meet, like, if they meet one section, they cannot meet the other section. If they try to meet the other section, then they cannot meet the first sections.
So, part of your hardship is you have so many teams that are performing or playing in the spring and the fall, that you don't have enough field space to safely let your students play, or practice?
Correct. I mean, I think the safety standard that's required today, the bar only gets higher.
Is that because of drainage, some of the problems with the drainage, is that what you're saying?
It's clay-based soil up there, those are old cow pasture, you know, old farm pastures that have never been made into proper fields, with the exception of this now being our fourth proper field, as I was outlining. And, yeah, I mean, a big emphasis of the school is, again, it's not about the interscholastic athlete necessarily, or the high-level athlete, that's a, that's a part of our program, but it's also basic, we don't have physical education classes during the day, so everybody's required to be a part of afternoon program to get exercise. So that requires, you know, six hundred kids, you know, it's like they're playing tennis, they're doing different things, they're not all on fields, fields, but nonetheless, there's a lot of them that have to get through there.
I'm glad you came with this thing tonight, because you kind of opened our eyes. We, we got to get something done with our regulations, to accommodate these new lights, and, I mean, it's, these lights are a lot better than what you see years ago. I mean, you're right, you go to a game, you're like blinded, you know, I, I kind of like that.
The International, I'm sorry, the International Dark Sky Association has recently published what they're calling their Community Friendly Guide to Sports Lighting, and it's a nice, probably just a three or four-page document, which is a great tool for you all to kind of use as a barometer, and you can just simply say, in order to light a field, you need to meet the parameters set forth in the IDA guidelines. And then, the fields can actually get certified by the IDA, and you get a nice plaque or letter, and, and it's a, it goes a long way towards building community support for protecting the night skies, especially us on the East Coast, it's tough, because we're so densely populated, and protecting that night sky is getting more and more difficult.
One of my concerns was, and I had mentioned it, that being able to see these lights from Route Six, but you answered my question with that, there's no light shining around that pole at all, I mean, you wouldn't even know there was lights on. You will see that the, you know, this field is working, but it's not going to be where you come around that corner, and you're going to be hit with lights.
We've actually run into more issues off the fields now, because, you know, before, you didn't, you weren't as concerned about the walkway from the parking lot to the ball field, because there was enough spill light from the stadium lights, that would always flood that area. Now, if there's, we have to be very cognizant of walkways, bleachers, if the poles aren't behind the bleachers, if they're up front, those bleachers are dark. We had ran into a little issue in Seymour, and because they have really deep bleachers, people were complaining they couldn't read the program, and they're in the bleachers. Because if you're not, if you don't tell us where you want the light, it's, there's not that spill light to provide that, that ambient.
The, if I understand your drawings, are they, the poles, I guess it'd be on the north side of the field, the trees on the bank are higher than the poles?
Correct.
So, closer to the building, the poles closer to the buildings, I should say, were somewhat shielded by the buildings?
So, the most, the most exposed pole is the one that I would describe as closest, closest to Route Six and closest to North Street, because, you, you'd recall, there's not, there's no building, there's no tree right there.
Right.
And so, that, that pole, whether it was thirty feet or seventy feet, is going to be very, you know, is going to be visible, is going to be very visible, no matter what, from certain places. You know, it's pretty densely tree-lined along there, but certainly some of the neighbors, and, you know, will, will see that pole, as they see other things on our campus, the boiler, planet tower, the, the flagpoles, you know, so.
I've got a couple of questions. The taper of the pole, how far is, what's the taper from top to bottom, or bottom to up, like, what is your way, you measure it?
So, the base of the pole, the, you probably look at about twenty-four inch diameter, and then it tapers up to probably, say about an eight inch.
You say the pole's going to be like frosted, so it's not going to reflect any light, the pole itself?
Correct.
Okay, how big is the size of this light, the actual?
We have a cut sheet in there, I believe it's about two feet. I've got, yeah, twenty-three inches by twenty-two inches. About basically two by two.
That reflector's anchored, isn't it, or is, that's not going to, no one's going to move that, is it?
I'm sorry?
The reflector itself, you snapped it on here, but that's pinned or bolted?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No magnets on that one.
Yeah, the other question, you showed, how far did you say that light was, like, from here to, at the end of the carpet?
So the, the window I was depicting, it was a hundred and fifty feet from the edge of the field.
What's the width?
The width of that field is about two hundred feet.
So the light's shining, that one's going to cover two hundred foot, oh, so you got an overlap of the lights.
Yeah, well, and you've got lights on both sides.
Yeah, but I'm just.
Yeah.
Okay, now, the other thing I noticed when I was there, I don't know if this makes a difference to anybody, but if you put a shorter pole on the higher bank, to compensate for a seventy-foot pole here, would, that'll kind of get it out of the neighbor's vision, and you'll still be seventy feet off the field, no? Can you do that?
The poles that are on the elevation side are actually further away from the field, so we need that additional seven feet of elevation to maintain the, the twenty-five to twenty-eight degree aiming angle.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I don't know which way you're looking at the field, but the bank side of it.
Yeah, the banks, the bank side of it has effectively bleachers built into it, you might remember those.
Like behind, where we were standing.
And so, so I think those, those seats necessitate the poles being further away, so therefore, the pole effectively has to be a seventy-seven-foot pole.
Yeah.
Seven foot of ground and seventy foot of pole.
Yeah, the, believe the, I think they're about twenty to thirty feet further from the edge of the field on that side, so as we go further away from the field, to maintain that angle, we, we have to keep going up.
Okay, so I just wanted to see if I can eliminate some of the, I personally have a problem with the seventy-foot lights, but I know I wouldn't want to see the poles in my backyard either, you know? So two foot, and, what's the distance to their houses, do you know offhand? Because you're not, I mean, you wouldn't be looking at that much of a diameter from five hundred feet away, it'd be like looking at a matchstick from here to you.
Right. The, I can't speak to exact, the exact distance of the neighbor, I think we had some slides in a prior deck, I don't recall the exact distance, but, but it's certainly, it's certainly, I would think, approaching five hundred feet at least to the backyard.
Okay, that takes care of my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Gary, Alseth?
Alseth, thank you.
Okay, thanks, fellas.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Okay, ma'am. Come up and state your name and address.
Heather Allen, one oh one Walnut Street, it's an adjoining property. I spoke to you at the last hearing. I have to say, I'm still concerned about the issue of hardship, and my understanding is that, in order to grant a variance, a hardship, in accordance with the state of Connecticut's very strict definition and criteria, has to exist, otherwise, the whole variance system, it seems to me, kind of collapses. And what they're now putting forward as a hardship, well, I mean, it's, it's, it's self-created. Taft has managed quite well without these lights for over a hundred years. The kids have ample opportunities for other athletics, including a couple of large interior spaces. I have to say, I, I just object a little bit to anything about attending Taft School being considered a hardship. I mean, it's just incredible privilege, they have ample opportunities for athletics. So, I, I'm just concerned that if you start to stretch hardship to something that's self-created, I'm, I'm concerned about that. And if you can legally grant a variance without a hardship as defined by the state, also in terms of setting a precedent, you say on your, your homepage here, that your decisions on individual applications do not set a precedent, but is, is that really the case? I mean, is that what the town attorney has advised you, that if you, your, your decisions create no precedent? I'm concerned, you know, I, I live right on the golf course, the, the country club is across from me, I already contend with very bright lights that are on all night, that render one of my bedrooms unusable, and I'm just thinking, you know, what if the golf club wants to have a nighttime driving range, and they come to you with the very same argument about industry standards, and it's got to be seventy feet, I mean, that would ruin my life. I mean, this is a hypothetical, but again, it, it's just, I'm concerned about how much you can stretch the definition of hardship, which is really determined by the state, as far as I understand. And then the issue of, of a precedent, you know, they're now asking for a forty-foot variance, that's more than double what's allowed under section. now asking for a forty-foot variance that's more than double what's allowed under section thirty-three point three point thirteen, which also states, as I recall, Musa, when you brought that up at the last hearing, it's not just a height limit, it also states that luminaries should be at the, at the minimum height to provide light, so that's also being greatly stretched, it seems to me. I would have liked to see in the display, rather than just the seventy-foot, that, that thing made adjustable so that we could have actually seen what light would look like from a lower pole with or without the same dark sky cap, and I know that they had said that up until now, when they have night games, they've been renting some lights, I'd like to know how, how tall those lights are, because one of their arguments is about safety, and I'm assuming that they haven't endangered the kids in the past by the use of these rental lights, so how, how tall are they?
I can, I can tell you that they're shorter and there's a lot more, so that there's six to eight lights per field when we, when we go that route, and they're, they're sort of the standard highway temporary lights that come, you know, construction companies have these out there, so I think that they're probably in the range of, you know, again, I'm guessing, but forty feet, when used, again, as we discussed, it would require more lights and it creates a lot more glare than what we're proposing.
All of which is, is self-created, you know, I, I just don't see how it's a hardship to want to extend the day, but, I mean, that's for you to determine, I, I can't give you chapter and verse on the Connecticut definition of hardship, I just know that it exists and that it is strict, and there are certain criteria, and it's my understanding that you have to go by that, I mean, I could be wrong, but that's, that's a question, so I, I'm concerned about this, and I'm concerned about the hardship issue and stretching it to this degree, I'm concerned about the precedent, the whole issue of, you know, putting some conditions on this as to how often they can use it and how late, you know, it's my understanding that that would be the purview of planning and zoning, because they would still need a special permit for the lights, is that correct? And it's under planning and zoning that those kind of conditions could be imposed.
Yes.
So, but I still have a concern about the hardship and the precedent.
Mr. Chairman, above the precedent, this board doesn't set precedents, each, each application is unique, and that doesn't mean because they issue, they granted a variance to one applicant, they have to do it in the same situation to somebody else, that is the Planning and Zoning Commission, if they approved a site plan and somebody come with similar site plan, they have to approve it, but this board, they don't set precedents, each application is unique and each situation is unique to this board.
And, and part of our charge is safety, aesthetics, and we, we have a lot of different things that we go by, that's why we're quasi-court, so whatever is decided here, that's it, there's no other.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I want to add that again, that unfortunately, our zoning regulations created this hardship.
Right.
Because if the applicant is trying to meet one section of the regulations, they are in violation of the other section, if they are trying to meet that section, then they are in violation of that, and this is something that I will bring to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission to change their regulations for future applications, but it's not their fault, they didn't create it that, these regulations put them in that situation, that they have to come here.
So, the changes would potentially allow more lighting?
I'm sorry?
The, the changes would potentially allow more lighting?
No, they should look at, to see that based on each situation, like suppose there is a tennis court, they don't need seventy feet height, they can have it lower because it's a smaller field, it should be like adjusted based on the use, because they have one number, like thirty feet height, and then in the sec, the next regulation says that the light cannot leave the field that you are trying to, but if they put thirty feet, the entire neighborhood will be lighted, but if they try to raise the height, then they are in violation of that section of the regulations, but definitely I'm going to bring this to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission to look into the regulations and fix this problem.
Okay, yes, well, I, all right, I mean, I'm, I'm not happy about this, but I, I just, you know, as a citizen, I at least wanted to voice my concerns, I, I'm still, I, I think they're stretching the hardship and I, I'm just concerned about that, because, you know, I'll be living with this for the rest of my life, but as far as, you know, I understand that there'll be another hearing at P and Z to address the matter of, you know, conditions of approval.
Yes.
So, but I just, I just wanted to voice that, so, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for, or not, ma'am? State your name and address.
My name is Diane Cherry and I'm at eighty-seven North Street in Watertown, my backyard borders Taft's baseball field, so if I'm in my backyard, I will be looking up at the lights, that is one of my concerns, is what I'm going to be seeing, and they mentioned something about candles, is it just one candle on a pole or are there numerous candles on a pole?
Go ahead, sir.
So, on two of the poles, there's nine luminaires and on the other two, there are ten.
And that, the luminaires are that one piece of?
That's correct.
Material, whatever, so I, it's not just, the lights aren't coming out from one piece, it's coming out from nine different?
Right, so, for his kind of, on the ball field, there, so each pole, four poles are responsible lighting one fourth of the field, so on one pole, there'll be fixtures aimed, basically like a half moon.
There is a drawing here, I want to shoot.
Oh, I see, so, because I couldn't really tell.
Yes, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of them, but they were all facing that.
So, if I'm, when I'm in my backyard at night, which I am during the summer and the spring, and I'm looking up at the field, I'm going to be seeing the metal part and not the light itself.
Yes.
Right.
So, it won't be shining.
It's a vibe.
Because at the high, I just was at the high school before I came here, and what you see there is the actual light bulbs.
Those, those are old style.
That's a, that's a bad example of lighting, yes, unfortunately.
That's the old, that's the old style light.
Right.
That's why we're, we're recommending that they change, a lot, change that regulation, because this new style, if, if you saw, there's no, you can't see light from the back to side, it just shines right on the field.
Okay, so, because that would be very irritating to see all that light, and I do have a pool in the backyard and we do use it at night, so I'm going to be out there, I don't want to be seeing all these lights, you know, I mean, that's, North Street is a beautiful street, and I really don't want to see it deteriorated because of different lights in the field, and I agree with this other, with Heather as well, I don't really think it's a hardship, I mean, they've been having games since the school has been there and they've not had lights, so, and, different schools were mentioned as far as having lights on their field, I know for a fact that all these fields may have lights, but they do not have houses in the residential area surrounding the fields, so that doesn't really concern, you know, the, the issue. Another concern that I have is the noise, I know with added lights, it's added activities, I'd like to know if they are going to be having, I understand that there might be performances, like theater performances, and also if the field is going to be rented out to premier clubs, which will be putting more noise and more, you know, obviously more games and more people on the field, so the, obviously whatever happens on that field, I hear in my yard, and obviously that is a concern, so I don't know, I kind of doubt if they have lights, that they're going to be ending things at six-thirty, seven-thirty at night, because then they wouldn't need the lights.
Hold on, sir, I'll have you come up after. I think that's a condition that planning and zoning for a special permit would probably impose, you know?
Okay.
Whether they can rent it out or lease it out, or have rallies or whatever.
Okay, well, those are just my concerns, seeing the light and the noise, so if you could just take that into consideration, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am, I'll have you come up after everybody's done, you could answer their questions.
Hi, Nancy Kinsella, twenty-eighth Green.
What was the address, I'm sorry?
Twenty-eighth Green, I would say, if we go back to one of those maps, my house is probably within the, the closest visual line to the proposed lights, I'm here to support the application, I think that as you've kind of addressed before, that the, whatever hardship may exist, it's really on the neighbors, if they complied with the zoning regulations as they stand, I think that the, it's clearly been displayed to me that the thirty-foot light would disperse more lights on the neighbors, including my own, and I think that the seventy-foot lights that Taft is proposing is the best option, frankly, for us, the neighbors, in terms of, of limiting that light dispersal to the field as it's needed, I think that, you know, we've lived at the property for almost twenty years and Taft has been a very good neighbor to us, and, you know, sometimes being a good neighbor requires that you come forward and say, when you support what they want to do, which is why I'm here tonight, I think that the reality of schools and secondary education require sports to be able to be played in leagues and, and night games are a part of that now, and I think that it is appropriate that Taft moves with the times and, and puts the lights in and that the option that they're presenting is the best possible option for the neighbors and the neighborhood, to achieve their purpose with minimal disruption to the neighbors and the neighborhood, I think they've done everything they can to maintain the neighborhood as it stands and as we appreciate, so.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for or against this application? Anyone else like to speak for or against this application?
I've got another couple of questions, Rick.
Well, he's coming up.
Oh, okay.
Come on up, sir. Do you want to answer his question or their question?
How many shorter lights would it take to give you the same light on the field?
More question for my friend here.
Let's say six versus four.
We, speaking for the manufacturer, we would not light that field with thirty-five foot poles, we just couldn't put our name on something like, it, it'd be the last field we lit in Connecticut, because it, it'd just be an absolute glare bomb and we can't have that kind of, that on our reputation.
Yeah, because I know you say you get a shorter light pattern, but if you have three to a side, wouldn't that kind of compensate for having a seventy-foot?
Be, no, because you still have that distance from the foundation to the center of the field, that, let's say a hundred and fifty feet.
Eight hundred and fifty feet, you said?
Yeah, from the, from the pole location to the center of the field.
What field are you lighting up for eight hundred and fifty?
One hundred and fifty.
One hundred and fifty.
Oh, one hundred and fifty, okay, I got here and it's, they still don't work half the time.
Yeah, so, we still have that hundred and fifty feet that we have to throw light, so to get that twenty-five degree aiming angle, we need seventy feet, that, that distance doesn't change.
I'm just trying to cut down the variance size.
Yeah, and we even, we showed the, the progression of the thirty-five foot glare impact, the sixty foot glare impact and the seventy foot, and that, that glare impact won't change with the number of poles, that, because that aiming angle, it's all about, it's just the geometry, that, that's fixed.
Would, would the number of poles accomplish anything favorable to the field, like if you, at that height? You'd still have the glare and the noise.
You, I mean, if you did six seventy-foot poles, you'd have fewer lights per pole, but I think the four is the best solution.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get away from this seventy-foot height.
But, Roger, the seventy-foot has to be, if you go lower than seventy feet, it's going to, it's going to wash the whole area, seventy feet is just going to go straight down.
Straight down.
And it's not going to wash the area and they won't even notice.
The other question I got from Musa, how did Watertown High get eighty-foot lights without going through a variance?
I don't have an answer for that.
I'm sorry?
He doesn't have an answer.
I don't have an answer, I think that was a part of the approval for the entire site, they never came here to get a variance for it.
And, I rent a light, like you guys were saying, I rented for the Fall Festival and it is a glare, I mean, you can't, once those lights are on at night, you can't even walk off of the festival out to, you're just about, it's hard to find your car with that light, I mean, it's, it should be higher too, if it was higher, it'd probably work a lot better, it wouldn't be a glare.
I have a question, there's no doubt that some of your students are privileged, right, but how many, how many scholarships, how many children are underprivileged, and how many scholarships do you offer to these kids?
Thirty, thirty-five percent of the six hundred kids get financial aid, and of that, you know, roughly, it, it's safer to say that, you know, twenty-five percent get full, full scholarship and then the, the rest are partial.
But that question has nothing to do with the variance, okay?
No, no.
I just want the record to be clear that.
I would like to run the record that Taft does a good job for this town. How long has it entered fields?
Taft?
How long has Taft been?
Taft was founded in eighteen ninety and I believe moved here in eighteen ninety-two, two years, one or two years somewhere else, and then Mr. Taft found his way here.
Okay.
The, as to the, I mean, it sounds like most of the other.
Could you answer their questions?
I, I'm happy to, and most of the other matters, I think, revolved around what I would consider planning and zoning commissions, based on what I'm hearing, as I tried to articulate, but I would repeat, you know, we're very amenable to, you know, having, we're not going to play games late at night, then, you know, the number of times we're going to use the lights is going to be a lot less frequent than when we do use them, the summer, we run, we run very limited summer programs, we do run, run a summer school, if they were to use the light, lights, I'd be surprised that time of year, there's no, they play athletics, but it's just intermural in the afternoon, maybe they would have a play night one night in the whole summer, I would imagine, I'm just thinking out loud, but it's hard to envision future use, but, but again, we're very amenable to that dialogue with the Planning and Zoning Commission, so.
I would add also, the system comes with a controls feature, so the lights can be scheduled when they turn on and when they turn off, so they're, again, going, probably going forward to P and Z, they, if they set a hard off time at ten o'clock, that can be programmed in and not overridden, they, also with LED, there's a high, medium, low setting, so it's not, they won't, the school wouldn't necessarily need the lights on high output for a lot of games, a lot of PE, you know, depending on the, what function, you can, with a flip of a switch, goes from a hundred percent output down to fifty percent, so fifty percent less energy for a percent less light, and then it can also go down to twenty-five percent, so whether it's band practice or, you know, just running drills, just on that twenty-five percent output, it's a, it's a very well-lit, safe facility.
Anybody got any questions, any more questions?
No. Alseth, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do I, yeah, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, application number twenty, twenty-two dash three of Melissa Mezzatini for a variance of section thirty-two point six, dash point three of the Watertown zoning regulations to install, for an installation of a second freestanding sign at. to install, for an installation of a second freestanding sign at twenty-seven Seaman Company Drive, Watertown, Connecticut, and IG twenty general industrial zoning district. Is it, oh, you impaired. Is there a, is there a legal notice? Yeah.
The zoning board of appeals, Town of Watertown, will hold a public hearing at seven PM on Wednesday, March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, at the Watertown Town Hall Council Chambers, sixty-one Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, to hear and act upon the following application. Application twenty, twenty-two dash three of Melissa Mezzatini for a variance of section thirty-two dot six dot three D of the Watertown zoning regulations concerning freestanding signs to permit a second freestanding sign, three foot by three point three three feet, to be installed at twenty-seven Seaman Company Drive, Watertown, Connecticut, in an IG dash twenty general industrial zoning district. Section thirty-two dot six dot three D of the Watertown zoning regulation permits only one freestanding sign on a lot for each street from which the lot has vehicular access. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. Copy of the application is on file in the Planning and Zoning Office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. Dated in Watertown, the tenth day of March twenty-twenty-two, as well as the seventeenth day of March twenty-twenty-two, Edwin Dalton, Secretary of Zoning Board of Appeals.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
It's Melissa Mezzatini. I work for Seaman Realty, twenty-seven Seaman Company Drive.
Okay, and what is your hardship for this sign?
So we have some tenants that are kind of like in the middle of both, because we have two addresses. We have twenty-seven Seaman Company Drive and seventy-six Westbury Park Road.
Okay.
So we have tenants that are in the middle, such as like the Buda Bistro, the Yoga Center. And they have been complaining, they have a lot of customers that can't find their locations.
Uh-huh.
Because the main entrance, they're not at the main entrances. So they requested that we put up a sign so that it's easier for people to find them.
Okay. Makes sense. Musa, did you go over there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, actually, I walked there. And it's the large building.
Yeah.
And there is two driveways on each end of the parking lot.
Uh-huh.
I mean, if you are looking for those businesses that they are talking about, you don't see it where they are. And if you go on the driveway that is going to the main building, you are totally in that wrong side of the building. And in order to create that, like a safety driving situation, it's better to have a sign there to tell people that where those businesses are.
Sure.
Because most people, what they do, they go on the road, and then they see that the business are there, they make a U-turn.
Ah.
And go back into the driveway. I think it's much better to have another sign there to show which businesses in that location.
Right now, there's no sign there at all, then?
No.
Okay, because I was over there today, and I couldn't find what you were talking about. I was looking for one, yeah?
See?
I found the main one, but I couldn't, I didn't, okay, I thought there was one already, and you just wanted to add to it.
No, it's where actually-
The other suggestion, have for that one in the front, if they trimmed the hedges, you'd probably see somewhere around those signs.
We're looking for a new company.
I looked at some, I just couldn't see the bottom two or three of them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we're looking for a new company.
Yeah, but the other sign is like, what, a hundred and fifty feet away? Almost, it's a good distance from where the main sign is, when you come in from Echolake Road, you get up to Far Corner, nothing.
Yeah.
You have no idea where anything is, unless you're familiar with the building.
Yeah.
If I was looking for it, I wouldn't know where it was.
Any other questions?
So Chairman, they notified all the neighbors, and we received the green cards in the office.
Oh, yeah, your green cards, I'm sorry.
We received them.
You got them?
They are in the office, yes.
I gave her everything I got so far.
Okay, good. Okay. Does there any, you all have any questions?
Anybody from public?
Anyone from the public wish, I, I have, I have to say it three times. Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Anyone from the public wish to speak for or against this app? Hearing none?
Motion closed.
Well, I'll set with you, so you can just sit down if you want.
Have a good night.
Motion closed.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Where the heck is that motor vehicle? Oh. We have a motor vehicle application, number twenty, twenty-two dash four of Universal Body. Right, that's the next one.
That's three.
Three. One right here.
Twenty, twenty-two dash three.
I thought we just did that one.
This is a motor vehicle application, so I can have the same.
Oh, it's the next one now? No, twenty-two dash three, is it? Melissa, that just left.
Yeah, there's a typo here.
No, it's not a typo. That is, that's a variance application, this is a motor vehicle application.
Yeah.
It's the same number, but a different.
So the next one is, yeah, the next one is motor vehicle application, twenty, twenty-two dash three of Universal Body and Equipment Company, LLC. Certificate of Location Approved for Motor Vehicle Use, Used Equipment and Motor Vehicle Replace, Repair at one ninety-two Park Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an R twenty, or an R two hundred residential industrial zoning district. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Let me read it.
Sure. I don't think there is a legal notice.
No, there is a legal notice.
There is?
Because this is a new location.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
The zoning board of appeals, Town of Watertown, will hold a public hearing at seven PM on Wednesday, March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, at the Watertown Town Hall Council Chambers, sixty-one Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, to hear and act upon the following application. Motor vehicle application, twenty, twenty-two dash three of Universal Body and Equipment Company, LLC, for certificate of location approval for a motor vehicle dealer, used equipment, and motor vehicle repairer at one ninety-two Park Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an IR two hundred restricted industrial zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. A copy of the application is on file, Planning and Zoning Office, in Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. This is dated the eleventh day of March twenty-twenty-two, also the seventeenth day of March twenty-twenty-two. Edwin Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, sir, want to state your name and address for the record?
Gordon Echol, Universal Body, at one ninety-two Park Road.
Uh-huh.
We are seeking approval to get our previous dealer repair license from Motor Vehicle Department, which we moved from Denunzio Road to the new facility we currently finished.
Well, I'm glad you're making use of our industrial park. It's a good place to be.
Yeah, yeah, it's been good to us so far.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, there is a statement of use, if the, Mr. Secretary can read that. Yeah, this is when the Planning and Zoning Commission approved this property, this was the use for that property. And this is good to have it in the record.
Okay, but I just wanted, wanted to, uh-
This is dated August twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty, Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Watertown, sixty-one Echolake Road. This is in reference to one ninety-two Park Road, Watertown, Connecticut, site plan, special permit application, JRD Properties, Watertown, LLC. Statement of use, and the address is one ninety-two Park Road, Watertown, Zone IR two hundred, restricted industrial. The application for, the application for site plan and special permit for outdoor storage is to develop a proposed building of fourteen thousand eight hundred square feet with associated outdoor storage to accommodate relocation of an established business known as Universal Body and Equipment, Universal. Universal is currently located on Denunzio Road, Oakville, Connecticut. The purpose of, of the relocation is to update and expand the business activities. Universal is an established company that essentially services anything that has to do with trucks, including but not limited to building truck bodies, snowflows of similar truck building. The business hours are seven thirty AM to four thirty PM. The company presently has eleven employees. It's likely the relocation will result in additional employees. All additional details are shown on the site plans. And this is from JRD Properties, Watertown, LLC, by Franklin Phillips.
Site plan?
So, so the business activities that you're, that is being done on Denunzio Road is exactly the same that's going to be done on Park Road?
We picked up everything that was inside the building and moved it up there.
And just relocation.
That's it?
That's it.
Anybody got any questions?
So this site plan was approved in twenty, twenty by Planning and Zoning?
Yes, recently, yes.
Recently, okay.
Yes.
So this is not just a letter, but it's, it's actually-
That was, yes. The reason that I bring it to you, to know that this was a business, that they are fixing trucks and stuff.
Sure.
It's not, yes. The, the location is new.
The location is new, but the site plan was approved.
Approved, with that, yes.
And they're moving to an industrial park, so there shouldn't, really shouldn't be any-
They just, here's a rubber stamp.
Right, pretty much. Do you have anything you want to say?
Oh, that's pretty much it.
Okay. All set, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion's closed, public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next application is?
Don't have anybody here.
Yeah, we do. Oh. Huh. Waterbury Auto Group, nobody's here.
Yes. Do you want to table it? Do you want to go and see the site?
Well, I got to read it first.
Yes.
Okay, motor vehicle application, number twenty, twenty-two dash four of Waterbury Auto Group, LLC, for a certificate of location approved for used motor vehicle dealer and motor vehicle repair at fifty-five McLennan Drive, Oakville, Connecticut, in an IG dash eighty general industrial zoning district.
I'll read the legal notice.
Go ahead, read it, yeah.
The zoning board of appeals, Town of Watertown, will hold a public hearing at seven PM on Wednesday, March twenty-third, at the Watertown Town Hall Council Chambers, sixty-one Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, to hear and act upon the following application. Motor vehicle application, twenty, twenty-two dash four of Waterbury Auto Group, LLC, for certificate of location approval for used motor vehicle dealer and motor vehicle repairer at fifty-five McLennan Drive, Oakville, Connecticut, in an IG eighty general industrial zoning district. At this hearing, interested persons and written communications will be heard. Copy of the application is on file in the Planning and Zoning Office, Watertown Municipal Center, sixty-one Echolake Road, Watertown, Connecticut. This is dated the eleventh day of March twenty-twenty-two, also, as well as the seventeenth day of March twenty-twenty-two. Edwin Dalton, Secretary, Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. There's no one here to represent the applicant, so do I have a motion to?
Continue the public hearing, and if you want to go and see the site.
Motion to continue the public hearing until the next meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I'd like to stay with a public hearing as well. I think we should go here.
Yeah, well, hopefully, hopefully they're still doing it. I mean-
We could just wait till next month and see what they even show up.
They didn't show up.
Yeah, that's fine.
Who knows, they may not even want to do it.
They didn't show up.
Something might happen. Okay, let's move on to the regular meeting. Election of Officers, well, we don't have everybody here yet. Phil said if we wanted to, you know, move to elect the officers, he doesn't have a problem with it, but I don't know about Nick.
Yeah, Nick is-
All right, so-
Just table it, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion?
Motion to table election of officers till next month.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, action on minutes. The regular meeting minutes are January twenty-sixth. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's an old business. Application number twenty, twenty-two dash one of the Taft School for a forty-foot height variance for installation of a, of four light pole, seventy feet high for an existing athletic field at one-ten Woodbury Road, Watertown, Connecticut, and an R twenty residential zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, so, I mean, they came here with an extensive plan, and, you know, pretty much, it's self-explanatory. The higher you go with a pole, the less light is going to shine, wash the area. And with these new lights, and the cover that they put on it, from what I could see, you, you don't even see the light from behind the pole, the side of, you know, you don't see it at all. So, I mean, they, they were very accommodating in, you know, every way. We went out there, did a sidewalk, they came in with a nice display, and I believe they're a good, a good neighbor to have in this town, so.
Yeah, the other, the other thing is, you know, our regulations do kind of put them in a corner.
Right.
You know, they, we, you know, if they try to comply with one section, they're not going to be able to comply to another section. So I, so I, you know, that causes some problems. Ms. Allen, that lives on Walnut Street, she, in my mind, she, she made a big difference to me. She, she made a, a reference to the golf club lights. There's a one bedroom, she says, when their lights are on, she's, there's one bedroom that's unusable. They have, I think they have old technology, so there's a wash of lights that's going way beyond their property line. If, if Taft School went to a thirty-foot light, I, I believe, you know, the Allen, the Allen home would be flooded with, with light. So I, I think the technology with having the taller lights is less, less obtrusive to the neighbors than if they used the, the regular lights. So I, I'm in agreement that they need to put the seventy-foot lights on.
I would also like to add that, Musa, see if you can get the Planning and Zoning to change these regulations, because, you know, with these new lights.
Yes.
I mean, I was going to say, if the golf course, what would the golf course need lights for? So if you could, if you can instruct the Planning and Zoning to change, you know, try to have some kind of program where they change, you know, maybe change the rules or add to it, or whatever they, whatever they feel is what they're comfortable with. But we got an eye-opener tonight from the, from Taft School, and that was a very nice presentation. So now we know these LED lights work.
I will bring this to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes, thank you.
I think, I think their hardship is legitimate as well.
Oh, safety, that's part of our charge.
Yeah.
Safety's part of our charge. Anesthetics, so, anyway.
Okay, well, I, I would just like to add to the record, if I could. Yes, we, the hardship thing, but we also are allowed to put a variance in place when it reduces the nonconformity of a, of a thing. That's just what we're dealing with here. If, if we make them put a thirty-foot pole, it's going to be a nightmare for the neighborhood. They won't be able to comply with that right now.
Apply with thirty-three dash one, point one, point one, thirty-three point three, point one, thirty-three point three, point nine. So it's just a conflict in general, and I think we can make it less nonconforming with this variance instead of, I don't see it as making it-
Good point.
Nonconforming. I, I would also just like to throw it out, I think it's a minority point, but I'd like to put it on the record. This is a school which is allowed in the zone. It is pre-existing by seventy-five years, and I believe this is a necessary use, and I'm, I'm actually a bit questioning whether they need a variance, but I just wanted to put it on, on the record.
Very good. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set? Thank you. Okay. Motor vehicle application, number twenty, twenty-two dash three of Universal Body and Equipment Company, LLC, for approval of a location for motor vehicle dealer, used equipment, and motor vehicle repair at one ninety-two Park Road, Watertown, Connecticut, in an IR two hundred residential industrial business zoning district. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there again, I mean, there are more and more buildings going up there and using that industrial park, which is a great thing, and that's, that's a, a great place for this business to move to. They're out of the way, they're in an industrial park, they have adequate roads to get in and out of it, there, there are, there aren't any houses in the area, so I think it's a great move for them to move up there, so. I don't know if anybody else has anything they'd like to add? Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Motor vehicle application.
We got, we got Seaman Company. Go up one.
Oh, yeah. Okay, application number twenty twenty-two dash three of, uh, Melissa Mezzetti for, for a variance of section, uh, thirty-two dash six dash three of the Watertown zoning regulations for installation of a second freestanding sign at twenty-seven Seaman Company Drive, Watertown, Connecticut, in an IG twenty general industrial zoning district. Do I have a, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there again, too, I mean, even when we, even when we approve new, new applications,